Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the city's Development and Zoning Review Committee. The purpose of this meeting is to provide this party an opportunity to informally introduce the concept of the proposed development to certain key city decision makers and to allow them to ask questions and provide comments. No decisions or recommendations on the proposed development will be made by this committee. Any proposals for development you hear or see today are in a very early conceptual stage of planning without the city's development of planning and public works having had the opportunity to review them. Accordingly, discussion of specific details of any proposed development at this time is premature as they are subject to change prior to the formal submission process. In light of the informal and preliminary nature of the presentation today, the public has been invited to attend in person here at City Hall via Zoom webinar platform or streaming live on YouTube and learn about the concepts associated with the proposed development in your city, but public comment will not be offered at this time. Any person interested in commenting on a proposal discussed today is encouraged to contact their elected representatives and also take advantage of the numerous opportunities to speak before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council when, if such occurs, the development is formally submitted for the city's consideration. So we'll take a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Garrettano?
Here.
Councilmember Galani?
Here.
Councilmember Brost?
Here.
Mayor Boland?
Here.
Chair Beatty?
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Vunage, you have some opening comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the committee, first of all, thank you for your attendance tonight. We do appreciate it. We know these are extra meetings, so we don't want to go much longer without saying thank you again. As is typical with these meetings, the Development and Zoning Review Committee, the Department of Planning provides you a number of items, some of which it produces and others provided by the applicant or petitioner. Tonight, again, you have the agenda for the meeting that is underway at this time. Along with that information, the department's provided you two aerial photographs of the general vicinity of the subject site and then a closer view of the subject site itself. That closer view of the subject site does contain the topography as well. Along with those two items are the town center information, the regulating plan, and then the list of land use activities from the updated town center plan itself. Thereafter, the petitioner applicant has provided you seven sheets of information relating to this particular project. Project is located on the south side of Crestview Drive, east of Etherington Road. It's the compilation of four parcels of ground, all legal lots of record, and the department would mention that two of those lots were previously submitted to this city for consideration as a single-family detached on individual lots proposal. That proposal made it as far as City Council. Since that time, two lots have been added to the overall area and a developer, another developer, has been brought in to assist in the project. And with that, if there are any questions for Mr. Newberry, Ms. Boto, or I, we certainly be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. You guys may recall Tony Bosworth, TV Realty and Development, 1380 White Road, Chesterfield, Missouri. As you guys may recall, we've been in front of this board three or four times now with various projects, and we get asked why we keep changing it. As you may recall, the first time we got approved was actually without this board. It wasn't in place yet, but for 12 units on roughly three acres, as Joe had identified the two parcels at the far northwest portion of the property identified in this. It went all the way through to second reading at City Council and ended up getting denied. So I get a lot of questions as to why we have changed the project. Subsequent to that, we purchased the other two properties, which are 2454 Etherington Road, which is the next property to the south, and 16928 Crestview, which is the next property to the east between what I had previously and the Village Green property. So in total, we have roughly seven acres. It's part of and within the master plan Neighborhood General Community, and it also includes the commitment by us for the contribution of roughly 0.6 acres for the Main Street extension. Again, we're not speculating on this project. We actually own it. We've closed on it. We've owned some of it for, I bought the first piece in 2005, which was about 1.6 acres. And over the last two and a half years, we've purchased the rest of it for a total, as I said, seven acres. We're proposing 65 homes and also 3,300 square feet of retail or office space on the northeast corner of the project. It'll include 11 homes on Etherington Road with rear-entry garages, 10 townhomes to the east with rear-entry garages, and the balanced 44 homes in the center of the project with two-car garages, two and three bedrooms, and two-plus bathrooms in each unit. We're harmonious with the adjacent properties to the south of our property. Our current home on 2454 is about 31, 32 feet from the existing home, which is currently non-urban. And in our development, our current plan, it'll be about 35 to 36 feet, so it'll be a little bit farther away. And the balance of the properties to the north are existing, non-urban and proposed, as you're aware, by McBride to be Neighborhood General, not too much different in density from our project. And to the east will be the Village Green property. The project meets the Wildwood Neighborhood General criteria generally, and we also meet the Architectural Review Board standards, including the James Hardy siding. We'll add a brick feature, the Colonial garage doors, the offset garage doors from the fronts as Wildwood likes in their non-urban development requirement, as also including architectural shingles. The one change since we brought this project to you that was previously approved, pretty much in its exact form, we've added some landscaping on the south edge of the property, but other than that, this plan is exactly as submitted previously and recommended to go to planning and zoning. The big change is we are proposing these now to be rental units. We've got another rental project similar to this in size and scope in St. Peters currently. Two other projects that are complete and two others that are under construction. I have William Levinson from Benton Home Builders and also Bill Taylor here, and I also have David Volz from Volz Engineering, our engineer, if you guys have any other questions.
All right. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Councilman Brost?
I guess you mentioned they're going to be rental units?
Correct.
So is this like, so they won't be individually owned? They will all be just rented?
We will own them all, but they are actually on single-family lots. They all will be platted separately, so if we choose to sell them in the future, we can sell them. The difference between these and apartments or condominiums is these are all, again, all platted separately. They're all fee simple lots, and they will be managed by a homeowners association versus a condo association, which is what Canterbury is managed under.
Okay. And I guess this is just the, I know on one of the photographs, the renderings of the front garages.
Yes, sir.
And I, this might be a question more for Mr. Vunage, but there's several of the homes that have trashcans in the street. Do we have any, is there any particularly in this area, is there any, any requirement on if people keep trashcans in the front of their homes or not?
Yes, Mr. Bros, our waste management code requires that the trashcans not be visible from any adjoining or abutting roadway, and they can only be put out X amount of hours before pickup and then must be brought in that same day.
Okay.
This was trash day, if I interject that. That was trash day when I took those pictures?
Well, I didn't, you know, I, it raised the question. I wasn't even going to ask you on it because it's not. And then the other thing, and this is something that, again, I think is more at the city level, but between the activity that's planned, you know, from City Hall going west, is there some way between the pending developments that we have that we could create in some manner what the collective look would be?
Yes, I think we can do something like that. I'll talk tomorrow with our city administrator and maybe we can call on a consultant just to do maybe a simple rendering of what Crestview Drive or Main Street Extension would look like if you were coming from west to east and then east to west.
Yeah, I, I just, because it's all going on at the same time. It'd be nice to, it's not a burden on any particular developer, but I think it'd be good to have that.
It's a nice suggestion, and thank you.
Councilman Garrettano?
Sure. Got a couple of thoughts, and I might even come back with some more after we get some more discussion. The one thing that I'm curious about, and I asked the same question when we had a similar proposal on the north side by McBride, is the homes that are on the Etherington roadside. You know, when I look at the drawings here, the view of the, you know, the garages there, I think if you go to the slide, let me see. I think it's the seventh slide, yeah, that one there. What threw me off, I was trying to figure this out, was that I think on the bottom left corner is the view that would be along Etherington Road because based on what I'm seeing, the garages are on the other side. But the, this view that's on the top right there, thank you, that seems to have more architectural features, you know, with more pointed, you know, the rooftops, and it kind of almost looks more like what you see in the area there. And I guess I take the bottom left as sort of like the back of the homes. But what I mentioned when we saw the proposal for the Crestview by McBride, you know, if we were going to have something, I think it would, you'd kind of want to at least match what's on, you know, on Etherington Road, or at least have, to me, what appears to be more of the, the, the front of these homes on the Etherington roadside. So that's one piece of feedback there. I think that that view is there as well. I mean, the other comment that I'll make, and you know, I think that's, you know, the concern of, you know, the residents around there is what we've heard over in the past, and that hasn't gone away, is it's just the topic of rentals and some of the issues that I know I've heard from the folks in Canterbury with some rentals. And so I'm curious how that would be handled in a situation where like this is all rental. And in Canterbury, they actually changed their indentures just recently to prohibit rentals because of the issues that they've been running into. So I'm curious because it would be ultimately, the city would be dealing with these headaches that would come up. So I'm curious about how that can be handled and what the city could do.
Can I ask, what were the issues at Canterbury? I'm not aware.
So in Canterbury, they had issues with rentals that, and like I mentioned, they prohibited now rentals as part of their indentures. I think there might be some grandfathered in, but what they've had is a surge of outside parties, companies coming in, buying the homes, and then basically coming in and then, you know, the rentals taking over. But I know in Canterbury, some of the issues that they've run into is that the rental companies are doing improvement work without any kind of the HOAs, you know, I guess, following their indentures. And they've had some issues that I think have really upset some of the neighbors there just with folks treating the property different than a homeowner would. And so I know that's a big concern that's just always come up. And so how do we make sure that that's under control if this were to be considered?
I'm not sure if that may be a staff question, however, the, I'm a little surprised to hear that some rental person occupant, especially in Canterbury, would be treating the outside any differently because they are maintained by the community. I think West End's the management company, but those are all managed exteriorly by an outside management company from the streets to the sidewalks, to the landscaping, to the plantings in front of the front porch. So I'm not sure what that may be, other than I did hear about a patio or something that got.
Yeah. And that's what I referenced. They were doing some kind of improvements without really, you know, being, having any awareness that there was even an HOA there. So how does that get handled in a situation like, do these people that would be theoretically renting from here, would they have any knowledge or observation of what can or can't be done or how, how things can be done in Wildwood? Like even the example of, of, you know, Larry Brose had with the trashcans and stuff.
It's, it surprised me a little bit that that happened in Canterbury, to be honest. However, that does occur when there's a mix of rental properties with owned properties and a small percentage of them are rentals. And again, a particular case that I'm aware of, there was, I think, a patio or a deck that got built and it wasn't within the constraints of what was going on. But I may be misunderstood. I haven't heard of any other issues, but obviously it's a function of the entity in place and how those are conveyed. How many people go to a closing and sign closing documents at their house when they're purchasing it? And don't look at the rules that are an inch and a half thick when they're signing all their closing documents. So that's why people always scream about HOAs in various communities all around the country, is people don't buy, HOAs get a bad rap because people don't look at them until there's a problem. It's in my almost 40 years of development, it's always been kind of a, you hear the people scream about the HOA, but it's also the same people, if you asked them, did you get your papers before closing and did you even read them after closing? So that's kind of my response to the HOA issues. I think the balance of that is probably staff questions beyond that.
Well, Mr. Garrettano, very briefly, obviously, we do have a couple of apartment complexes in the city of Wildwood. Those were started prior to the incorporation of the community. For the most part, we do exercise property maintenance in association with them, just as if they were a single-family detached dwelling. And equally important is the police are there to address any more serious problems that may arise with rentals and the tenants associated with them.
Mayor Boland?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. So I obviously am not familiar, Tony, with your business plan. First of all, I want to thank you for your continued interest in our city. I'm not familiar with, you know, your business plan on the decision relative to rental versus, you know, be simple, absolute ownership. I tend to be a political pragmatist on some of these things, and, and I think without, you know, putting my personal opinion aside, my, my understanding is I think that if this were approved, it would be the first time that a rental would be approved for something that would be considered, you know, a, a single-family or at least a single-family look. I mean, I think, as Joe mentioned, we do have some that started, you know, actual apartment complexes that started and maybe were done before the city incorporated. We also have a proposed development in the heart of town center that's going to be multi-story. You know what I think people think of more so when they think of apartments, but these, of course, would be more, in my opinion, at least visually along the lines of a, you know, single-family type condo, you know, residence. And I, you know, it's always dangerous to read the tea leaves, but I think that there would likely be some opposite, some significant opposition to the rental structure. And I don't know if selling these, you know, and having be simple ownership is, is even possible with your business plan. That's not really any of my business, but I just sort of see that, I think it's something that might be in play, knowing my community as I do. The second of my two comments, and perhaps maybe the more minor of the two, you know, I don't think that this, this comment would result in anything significant in terms of expense relative to the development, but on the, the side that has just the stoop, you know, with lots of windows, and I appreciate the Hardy board siding, but if something could be done to, you know, sort of beef that up with some masonry or whatever from an aesthetic standpoint, I think that would go a long way to, you know, selling the project. So again, I want to thank you for coming forward with it. Those are my two comments and thanks for considering them.
Does anyone have any further comments or questions? Councilman Garrettano?
Yeah, maybe I can get that clarification on one of the first points I brought up. So am I reading it right? Like when we're looking at, when we were looking at the drawings before, the, the part where, or as Mayor just mentioned, the stoop, is that theoretically the back of the home?
No, on the, on the fronts that you were inquiring about for the Avon's, right? Yep. Avon's, no, they're actually, it's actually a porch similar to what you see on Main Street Crossing. But actually, I, we didn't set it beforehand, so I didn't think about it, and I apologize. We've got an elevation. I think, well, he's able to pull it up here. There you go.
Okay.
That's the front.
And then what's the back look like then?
That's, that's the garages in the back.
So the garage, but then is the next row over have the garages as the front?
Two rows over, yes, they do, sorry. The, the next three.
That's what threw me off. It's like, it seemed like garages appeared to look like the front. And then, you know, it was kind of like the back of the homes matched up to the back of the homes there, but.
Now, Joe, on the, on the second row, Joe, in those pictures that I have in the package I provided you, that's similar to what the fronts of those will look like. That's the same product, actually.
Which one? The?
On the second page where it says meets Wildwood's Neighborhood General requirements, some of the ones that Larry had asked about with the trashcans in front, that's the front of that second row.
Got it. Okay, I see that there. Well, I mean, is there any possibility, and I, and I appreciate you bringing it forth, you know, you're, you're a part of the community, and I think you want what's best for the community, having been a member there. But just throw it an idea around, like when we go at the layout of the whole property, there's a slide there, if you can bring that up. And I don't know what kind of like, yeah, the one back, that, that one there. Like, I know you've got space over in the detention basin, but is there anything at all that would, could be considered to kind of just break it up a little bit, the spacing around it, just to, just to kind of make it match a little bit like what you see around there? There's a little more breathing room that I think, you know, if it's possible to kind of do that, would that mean some shifting around? You know, I think that was just something I was thinking of, just so that it just kind of breaks it up. You know, like in Canterbury, they have driveways to get to the back, and you have that in that one row, the one closest to the Future Village Green, you see that there, kind of breaks it up a little bit. But is there any thought of that possibly or not, or anything like that? I mean, that's what I would throw out there. You know, if, you know, you could think of something like that. I mean, you know, I know that, you know, I like the original latitude plan that you had that was very unique to Wildwood, but I'm trying to see what could make this a little more unique than just pretty much just straightforward streets right there like that. So that's my two cents there, you know, to try to see how you can improve that. I mean, the only other thing I'll reinforce, and I mean, Tony, I think that's something you've heard before, is I do think that, you know, the topic of rentals is something that is going to be an issue for some people. And, you know, we've heard it in the past before, so I don't think it's going to go away, but I want to reiterate it because I do think it just will be something that will have some opposition by folks for a whole bunch of reasons.
Councilman?
Oh, go ahead.
No, if you have a response, go ahead.
Just on, as far as the rentals, if I could divulge some, some real-life data for a project that's been occupied for 18 months now, two years. The average, now we have about 100 units in this project we're referencing, too. The average age is over 50 years old, it's almost 51 years old. The average household income is $124,000 per household. One of the big things that we find with this is that it becomes an alternative to senior living if somebody wants to live in a senior living, but it's like eight to, or seven to $9,000 now to live across the street here in a, in a assisted living, which basically assisted living results in living in an apartment, but having your, your meals provided, basically. And this is a, an opportunity that we find a lot of our occupants use as an alternative to specifically senior living, like say what's done here, what's done at the fountains, and substantially less. Our rents are from 2,600 to 3,300. Our units are bigger. Even if you knock out the highest and lowest income and age, our age still exceeds 51 years and our income exceeds 117,000 a year, which is again, higher than the Wildwood average. So, and as you commented, people who are making that generalization about rentals are comparing us to apartment complexes. And those of us in Wildwood who've been through any sort of family issues, financial issues, divorce, whatever, some people, we call the pathway to divorce, the gates at Carriage Place. So it's a need that's, is happening here. We've heard past council members, even with the city, refer to not having a senior place to go live other than the meadows down by the community college. So we provide a, a pretty dramatic need. Another couple of things just off of MLS, not off of any private source, but there's been 113 MLS transactions since September for rental units within the city of Wildwood, 60 of them within a mile of the City Hall. That includes, it does not include Sandalwood, it includes Hickory Farms, Canterbury, one in Main Street Crossing, excludes my three. I intentionally didn't go back past September because I didn't want to pick up my three rentals. It includes. It includes West Glen. One in Dartmouth. I apologize. I didn't have a reason here. Anyway, there's, there's a tremendous need for for rentals here and getting it organized and in a community that services that, I think would be a big benefit to the community and to the people that want to live there.
Maybe just one quick follow-up if I could. You, you mentioned, was that the rent that you were saying for this development or was that from another location? What's the proposed rent that you would, you're thinking of would be in this?
20, 26 to 33. 2,600 a month to 3,300 a month.
Thank you.
And just so you know, our standard, which for home rentals is pretty much the norm, our standard is three times the rent for the annual income for somebody to live in one of our residents.
Councilman Galani, did you have any comments? I saw your hand up a minute ago.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to touch on, I think that the mayor had actually brought up this point previously, but I, and what Joe was talking about earlier of the properties that's going to be facing Etherington Road. And I think that's, I'm looking at, it looks more kind of like a wall of, I think those are the apartments perhaps with the garages in the back, but I was just going to advocate that perhaps the, I mean, the James Hardy siding is nice, but I like the stone feature at the bottom of the, of the poles there by the doors. If there could be some more stone or masonry on the actual walls of the buildings, that would make it a little bit more appealing or more Wildwood like, I would say. And then the other thing is I like the back of the, you know, where the garages and the multi-points and the back there almost looks like a front entrance, so to speak. Something like that on the front side as opposed to looking like, it looks like apartments, which I think it would be better if it didn't look so much like apartments and look more so like single family. Made to look more broken up or, or more like individual, kind of like if you see it from the back where the garages are. I think that's more aesthetically appealing as far as what's in the area type thing, but that would be my, my comment. I think Joe and Jim have echoed some of the comments.
Now those, in response to that, we we haven't done a rendering yet. However, every discussion we have, we've had discussions about adding the stone and or brick to the fronts of these. Similar where everybody does 34 to 38 inches of brick and or stone in the front of the house and or around the porch stacks at the front. So we're fully prepared for that.
Councilman Bros?
Yeah, I guess just for clarification, if I'm looking at the renderings, am I correct by saying that every rendering presented here is actually the front of each unit, the front of every?
On the pictures?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are existing units that are built and in place that we've.
But there, there's no photos at this time of the backside of, of anything proposed.
No, I didn't take any pictures.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I thought. So I just want, so the garages that are pictured that is also the, the front of those homes, but on a different street. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? If no one has anything else, I guess motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
All right. Motion by Councilman Garitano, second by Councilman Bros. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any had to say? All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.